All right, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board appeals public hearing for March 25th. Just a few reminders. If you have an electronic or cellphone device, you can shut it off or put it on vibrate so it doesn't start meeting. It'd be appreciated. Also, you can join the meeting via Zoom and through call as well, as well as in person here at the city council chambers. And then if you're speaking on behalf of petition tonight, just if you can come to the lectern, say your name and address for the record, and just... That'd be appreciated. We're going to take some stuff out of order tonight. Under ZBA-2023-43 is a variance. The applicant is Wedman Teneus, 39 Corbin Street. The applicant has applied to Lowell zoning board appeals seeking a variance approved to construct a second story addition to the existing single-family home at 39 Corbin Street. The subject property is located in traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval from the zoning board appeals per section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor FAR requirements and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. We did get communication that they are requesting continuance to April 8th. Mr. Katribus, we have an opening on that day, correct, to add them? Okay, perfect. All right, if there's no further discussion, can I have a motion to continue this matter?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-43 for variance at 39 Corbin Street to be continued to April 8th, 2024.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter. Second one, Mr. Hovey, can I roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 8th, 2024.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 8th, 2024.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance, April 8th, 2024.
Member Nickerson.
Approve continuance.
All right, the matter has been continued.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, this is the second continuance for this matter, so if we can make sure you let the applicant know. We normally don't go past two continuances, so... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. And one other item we're going to take out of order, ZBA-2024-7. A petition is a variance. The applicant is Tim Fallon, property located at 48 Rockingham Ave. The applicant has applied to Lowell zoning board appeal, seeking a variance approval to construct in addition to the home located at 48 Rockingham Ave. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance for the maximum floor ratio and any other roof required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. The applicant has also requested a continuance.
Actually, did you say you mentioned that they were looking to withdraw it?
Oh.
Yes, so the applicant is looking to withdraw. They changed the plans that they submitted from a multiple hundred square foot addition to just, I think it was like a 30 to 50 foot bump out. They met with the building commissioner today, and he said that the applicant does not need a variance for FAR.
Did they provide that in writing?
The building commissioner said he was going to email you. I can follow up with him tomorrow, yeah.
I mean, I just... Yeah, I mean, probably move to... Accept the withdrawal condition upon the applicant providing written confirmation of their withdrawal.
Yep, will do.
I mean, that makes sense, right?
Yes, that definitely makes sense. Thanks, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other comments before we withdraw this application without prejudice? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-7 for variance at 48 Rockingham Ave to be withdrawn without prejudice with the condition that the applicant provide a letter stating that they choose to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan, can I roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice with condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice with condition.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice with condition.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
All right, the matter has been approved. All right, going on to our scheduled item on the agenda, we have continued business. ZBA-2023-30, petition is a variance. The applicant is Vanessa Alves Santos, property located at 33 McKinley Ave. The applicant has applied to Lowell zoning board appeals, seeking a variance approval to extend the driveway that would not meet the dimensional standards of section 6.1.10 of the Lowell ordinance. The property is located in the traditional, single-family TSF zoning district and requires approval per section 6.110 and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing Ms. and Mr. Santos this evening. They apologize for not being able to be here. Mrs. Santos is quite ill, but I have recently been retained and am hoping to coordinate getting this off your agenda as quickly as possible, if that is something that's amenable to you folks. Concerns that have been raised by both engineering and staff were a mouth of impervious area, concern with stormwater runoff, as well as the close proximity to the neighbor. I just recently obtained the contact for the neighbor, Mr. Tom Kerwin. I plan to reach out to him next week and coordinate a drainage system in the rear to see if he's acceptable and if that would be amenable for him to be comfortable with this application. And I believe that with the soils that are in the rear of the parcel, they're A soils, Charlton soils, we could take a majority of that stormwater from the additional driveway impervious area that these folks are proposing and get that in the ground and leaching into the substrata, hoping that the commission... The board is willing to allow me the additional time, seeing as I know that this project has been on your roll call for quite some time. I think Mr. and Mrs. Santos are eager to try and come to a resolution here, and I would hope that if the board is willing, would allow me to continue tonight, finish my design and discussions with the neighbor, and move forward with this project with some quality design for you guys at the next hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier. All right, what's the will of the board? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, this has already been continued three times already, and I understand the last time, you know, Ms. Lanier.
I did hear that. I heard that.
You just got involved, I get it.
I heard that, and I apologize.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my options here are that they still want to move forward, Mr. Callahan, but I guess if you folks need me to, I'll withdraw without prejudice tonight and reapply. But ultimately, they do want to move forward with the application. I guess when I spoke with Ms. Santos, she's had some trouble with, you know, advertising incorrectly, I guess, which caused a continuance. Death in the family, which I believe was her grandfather.
Okay.
And again, I don't want to waste the time of the board. I know they've contracted with me, they're willing to move forward, but, you know, again, I can understand the circumstances and the policy of the board, so...
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, because I'm looking at the new site plans, and again, I know you just got involved, but I can't even tell what, if anything's been changed, what we told the Santos's before.
Yep.
I think we... I'm sure you probably researched and you looked at the last meetings, and we made it very clear to them what we were looking for with regard... And what their plans were showing that didn't seem to go.
Yep.
So if that's something you're willing to do, I'd make it so that... I'll listen to my other fellow board members, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for taking up the call upon me, you just said...
No, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Appreciate your comments, sir. All right, Mr. McCarthy, do you have any comments, sir?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I think there's also a regulation about 90 days, and we've been... I think we're up against it, if not close to being up against it, if we provide a continuance, that we need to render a decision within 90 days. We might be pushed in order to satisfy that as well, to withdraw without prejudice and resubmit, just because of that regulation that mass state law has.
And again, Mr. McCarthy, we're amenable to do that. You know, I don't know if it's the ability. We could also provide staff with an extension approval if that's necessary.
If... We're definitely past 90 days from when they had their first hearing. I don't know if the continuances extend that. I'm not sure of the legal statement on that, but their first hearing, it looks like, was September 11th of last fall. I'm sorry, that's when they didn't run the legal ad, so they were not heard that day. They were first on the agenda on October 23rd, which still is more than 90 days.
I don't know what my colleagues think here. I think due to the open meeting laws and the time period that we have to render a decision within the 90 days, which is well past it, I think the best option right now is to withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that opportunity. In lieu of that discussion, I would like to withdraw without prejudice, just so we can get our ducks in a row, and I can come back in front of you guys with a solid application.
Okay. Thank you for that, Ms. Lanier. All right, any further comments by my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to withdraw, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-30 for variance at 33 McKinley Ave to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko, can I roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to... For the record, it was Mr. Hovey who seconded.
Oh, strike that. You could just second the motion by Mr. Hovey and not Mr. Proko, just for the record.
Wonderful.
All right, Ms. Lanier, you've been approved with the withdrawal, so wish the best of luck with your project, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier.
All right, moving on to new business. We have ZBA-2024-8, petition is a variance. The applicant is Daily Group, property located at 32 Union Street. Daily Group has applied to Lowell zoning board appeals to construct a duplex at 32 Union Street. The property is located in the urban multifamily UMF zoning district and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for maximum... Excuse me, for minimum where you are setback and any other roof required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. We're here this evening to request a variance to the rear setback for the property at 32 Union Street. We are here on behalf of the Daily Group. If you're not aware, they've done a number of developments within the city, and they have a great reputation for the work they do. It's owned by Mr. David Daly, who is the president and owner of the Daily Group. He cannot be here this evening. He apologizes for not being here this evening. A representative of his company is on Zoom, so I don't know if Mr. Katribus might see Jonathan Miller or David Daly representing the Daily Group, if there's any questions related to the applicant. So we have a piece of property at 32 Union Street, which is currently vacant. That property is owned by the city of Lowell. The Daily Group is currently in a purchase and sale agreement to purchase this property. I'd like to say that we could put a building on this property without needing a variance. But as this property is small in size, it's approximately 3,900 square feet, and with the setbacks on this lot for a proposed duplex, we wanted to make sure we can incorporate the parking within the parcel itself. So we have a parking space for this proposed duplex in each garage for each unit, and we also have 21 lineal feet from the building to the property line, which allows for a parking space to be in front of the garage, which would be a length of 18 feet. And then we also need an additional three feet for the setback for the parking space to the front lot line. The rear setback requirement is 15 feet. We're proposing 12.6 feet, so we're asking for relief of 2.4 feet. The plan that's... I've provided to each zoning board of appeals member is a site plan, which shows the location of the duplex. It also shows an individual driveway for each duplex, as well as a small deck in the back with a stairway to get off the back, out of the back. It also has grading around the property, and we feel as though this building, the size that it's shown, is going to be well-suited on this property. I know Mr. Daly has also gone around into the neighborhood and introduced himself to all the neighboring property owners and has shown them the proposed plan, and it's my understanding has gotten general support from the neighboring properties in the neighborhood. I'd also like to note that a lot of the properties in this neighborhood also don't have parking necessarily on their properties, so this, I think, is going to be an addition to help mitigate the need for on-street parking for this development by accommodating the two vehicles within the property itself. We've received comments from the Department of Planning and Development. We're encouraged that those were favorable comments. We also have comments from the engineering department, specifically related to a sewer manhole, which we... Which we'll address if we obtain an approval this evening, when we go to do the building permit phase, when we then have to go and speak to the stormwater team and all the administrative departments within the city of Lowell to actually get the physical building permit. We're also encouraged by the economic development comments that were provided in the memorandum from the Department of Planning and Development, which I won't read verbatim, but this does provide a need for the city for housing. It also is going to displace the current activities that go on in this property, of which I do not know any of these activities that are cited in some of the correspondence, but I have visited the site, and we feel as though that fully developing the site will be a great addition to that neighborhood. And it was encouraging to get the support from the economic development comments. Our hardship is the building is only 28 feet in length. We were trying to figure out a configuration of this duplex that would accommodate less of a footprint in the depth of the building, and feel as though this 28 feet in length is necessary in order to accommodate a vehicle in the garage, associated stairwells within the garage, and to provide a reasonable-sized duplex for this lot, where we comply with all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance. We're also providing drainage mitigation for the roof runoff, and, you know, the site will be fully graded and landscaped. If anyone has seen the work that Mr. Daly does, he does a nice job. He has a good reputation, and I think the city would be pleased with the completion of this duplex on this parcel. So I put it over to the zoning board of appeals members to ask any questions. I do have the architectural elevations with me as well, and I can answer any questions related to the site plan.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hammer. We'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone else speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of the proceeding is closed. Anyone else speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, proceeding is closed. We're going to open questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to admit that I'm enthusiastic about this project because, well, the fact that it's, you know, historically that this site has been dilapidated for so long, and I think the comments also that was mentioned, that, you know, as it is now, it's been inviting, you know, trash and things of that nature. It's a compact area, so I think anything that you do would be an improvement, and I do like the renderings, the design. I think the fact that you're willing to make exceptions or to improve the neighborhood, putting garage so that you won't have that impact on the street, because it is a very small street, and you are correct, as I surveyed that area, not many houses have any garage spacing, so I don't have any particular questions, but I'll leave that to the rest of the board members. But I definitely am looking in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I've spoken to a couple people in the neighborhood. They seem to be happy with this as a solution to that vacant lot. I know there was some talk about, you know, open green space there, where they had some real concerns with the activity that's going on currently there. So we're asking for less than two feet of relief, providing off-street parking. And the plans, they're nice. I think it's going to be a big improvement to that area, and I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say what a wonderful thing Mr. Daly is doing here in this lot, and I am so glad to see this come before us, because we need housing in the city, and this is substantial housing in a neighborhood that needs substantial housing. So I'm really glad to see this. I would like to ask for shade trees.
I expected that you would, and I should probably start just adding these to the plan. Sometimes I do. I didn't... I did it on purpose, so we can most certainly add a few trees, a couple trees out in front. It would be no problem at all, Mr. McCarthy.
So I'd like to suggest a condition that the applicant provide two street shade trees of two-and-a-half-inch caliper with a 15-foot, up to a 15-foot canopy after 10 years of growth. And then I'd also like to have a condition that you satisfy the nine comments from the engineering department.
Yep.
Okay. That's it. But I'm so glad that Mr. Daly is doing this. I think that this is a wonderful project that he's taking on in this location, so thank you.
Eventually, we're going to fill all the gaps.
Nice to see.
One lot at a time.
With quality construction.
Sure, absolutely.
And providing off-street parking in the garage. It's amazing. Yep, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this makes total sense on this. First of all, it's amazing. Thank you for providing the deeds that date back to like the 1840s from there. It's like, that's going...
That's the fun part.
It's going way back. Those are... I appreciate it. I always love seeing those, Mr. Hammer, and like, because I'm a student of history. I love everything about the city of Lowell and the history of the city of Lowell and stuff like that, and seeing stuff like that. That always piques my interest, which also got me to go on to the registry of deeds to find out what the status, first of all, confirmed the city. The city just got this property in 2022.
Yep.
They took it in 1995.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been going on for years and years.
Incredible.
So it's just... In the meantime, the property's been sitting there, dilapidated, with all the other items that have been mentioned in your package of that area going on. And to have a nice property here, that I know Mr. Daly, who does good work, is going to, you know, take care of and put that in there, and have this property after so many years, 20-something years, finally be developed and put back on the tax rolls, it's a... I'm glad that Mr. Daly is taking that initiative on that, and you should be commended on that. So very highly enthusiastic about this project, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a great project as well. I think that the variance is very minimal. I do think it's important to address the engineering comments that were on the letter here as well, but I think it's a great project, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Hammer, I think you said it all in a nutshell. I think, you know, this would be a great addition to the housing stock, and again, Mr. Daly and the Daily Group does quality work, so I think it's going to be a good project for the city as a whole. You're amenable to all the conditions that we talked about?
We are.
Okay. If there's no further comments, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-8 at 32 Union Street for variance for rear setback, with the two conditions that they provide, the applicant provide two shade trees along the street with a two-and-a-half-inch caliper and a 15-foot canopy after 10 years of growth, and that the applicant satisfy all nine of the city engineers' comments.
Motion by Ms. McCarthy, second by Mr. Hovey, can I roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Chairman Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve the conditions.
Member Nickerson.
Approve the conditions.
All right, Ms. Hammer, you've been approved.
Very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Have a good evening. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2024-9. Petition type is special permit variance. The applicant is National Grid, property located at 189 Walker Street. National Grid has applied to the zoning board of appeals, seeking variance and special permit approval to construct an energy transportation at 189 Walker Street. The property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires special permit under section 12.78 for the public service utility use, a variance under section 5.1 for use of open space for dwelling unit, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. Yes, sorry.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yes, you may.
My name is Aaron Pike, representing National Grid tonight. With me, I have CDM Smith, who's our design engineering firm for the project. Some handouts coming around now, showing the project layout.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you tonight. For the record... Oh, sorry. I guess I'm speaking on behalf of a guy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. For the record, my name is Scott Langren of CDM Smith, 75 State Street, Boston, Mass. We are consulting engineering firm representing the project applicant, National Grid. We are consulting engineering firm representing the project applicant, National Grid. With me tonight is Aaron Pike of National Grid and my colleague Jonathan Welch from CDM Smith. We are here to present case number ZBA 2024-9 for 184 Walker Street and ZBA case number 24-10 for 813 Broadway Street as they relate to an overall network geothermal pilot project being proposed here in the city of Lowell. The two subject properties are before you as part of that overall project. We'll provide you a brief overview of the overall project and then specifically present the relief for 189 Walker Street. And after you open the next case, 2024-10, the specific relief sought for 813 Broadway Street. The handout I just gave you are the same boards that we have here tonight. This aerial photo shows the project area located in the acre neighborhood of Lowell, south of the Merrimack River and east of the Pawtucket Canal. The overall project area is the area outlined in red directly east of the UMass Lowell campus with the 813 Broadway Street parcel to the north and the 189 Walker Street parcel to the south. If you go to the second plan, number two, Jonathan Welch is going to present an overview of the project from that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I'm John Welch, project manager for this, representing National Grid for this project. We've been working on this for the past year and a half or so, and basically the project is, like Scott said, it's a geothermal project. It's a district scale. Geothermal's been around for a long time, but this is really one of the first times it's been applied at a district scale. It also gets applied quite a bit at universities, so it's sort of a similar model there. So it's proven technology that we're applying here. So with that, on this board right here, you have this with you here. I just wanted to go around a little bit and describe the project, and I'll turn it back over to Scott for like specifics on the permitting side of things. So background here is, this is a district scale. It is a project that pulls in mixed use. So it's residential, it's low-income, it's housing authority properties. It's the University of Massachusetts as well, and also a large commercial facility. And what we do there is we try to balance out the system, and that's what makes this a good system, is that basically we're balancing out with different types of loads. So with that, I'm just going to go around and like describe what this project is, and then we'll get into some of the permitting side of things, but I just wanted to set the backstory here a little bit. So the project is made up of two borefields. They're geothermal bores that are closed-loop systems, so there's no connection to the aquifer. I think it's a closed-loop circulated system. We have 36 bores, 600 feet deep, located in the UMass parking lot. Those are all manifold together, and I'll talk about the pump house in a second here, but they're all manifold together and they run into the pump house. There's also a smaller borefield located in Wall Street, which is made up of eight bores that are, again, 600 feet deep. Those are manifold together as well. So what the idea is, we have a system that pumps fluid around the ambient loop, which is Broadway, Walker, Wilder, and Wall Street, makes that circle. And the system operates where we're pulling in energy from the ground, using that energy to both heat and cool these properties. So we're converting over from fossil fuel over to a renewable technology. And from there, we are basically putting together, there's two structures. One is the pump house and one is the energy transfer station, which we'll talk a little bit more on both of these agenda items. But with that, we're using the system to basically provide heating and cooling sources for these homes and businesses and schools. So the UMass property is made up of the sustainability building and also the women's study building. Mammoth Fire Alarm is the larger commercial building that's on the system. And then we have, sorry, several residential homes that are multifamily or two-family homes around the block, and you can see those color-coded on the figure. So the idea is basically to pull that energy in. We don't have a direct connection to the homes. You'll see the energy transfer station located at the housing authority. That allows the system to provide the energy transfer to that building, but it doesn't actually have a connection for the fluid, which is a factor that actually helps the performance of the system and protects against, if there's an issue at the housing authority, we can basically, you know, still operate entirely. So I'll leave it at that, I guess. I'm going to turn it over to Scott, unless there's any questions right now that I could answer on the overall system.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, specifically on to 189 Walker Street. Just wanted to make one clarification on this plan as relates to the letter from DPD. In the DPD comment letter, actually for both letters, it states, "Both projects will work in tandem as part of a National Grid pilot program on using geothermal energy for heating and cooling at 189 Walker Street." And I just wanted to clarify, as you see on this plan, all the properties identified in green and labeled in that chart are going to be provided geothermal energy. So there's actually 11 different properties identified on this drawing, including the 189 Walker Street parcel. Just wanted to make that clarification. On the third plan, which is before you hear, "We're seeking a variance and a special permit in order to construct an energy transfer station specifically to serve the 189 Walker Street parcel." The proposed building shown in blue is nine-and-a-half feet by 20 feet, single-story structure to be constructed on that property. Building will be located, as shown here, in the rear of the property. And on the fourth sheet, you can see the various elevations of that structure. It's basically, it's meant to look like a shed. It has a simple pitched roof with asphalt shingles and siding and a simple door in the front. "With regard to the variance, variance required under section 5.1 for usable open space per dwelling unit." "The subject property houses 12 units, and per section 5.1, 500 square feet of open space per dwelling unit is required, equating to 600 feet of total open space." "There's currently approximately 1,750 square feet of open space, making this an existing non-conforming condition of the parcel. All other zoning setbacks are met. The structure being proposed is to be located on the existing paved parking lot and therefore not extend this existing non-conformity. The proposed structure is being built as described with pitched roof and shingles. Based on what we're proposing, we believe the requested relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, as its new proposed use will not further exacerbate the existing non-conformity. Also appears that the relief can be granted without nullifying or derogating from the overall intent of the overall TMF zone." "The special permit is required under section 12.7 for the public utility use of this traditional multifamily zone. As outlined in our application and as noted in the DPD comment letter for this parcel, we meet the special permit criteria, including Lowell 2025 goal, excuse me. "The building's small size will not alter the neighborhood character, and the intended use will aid in creating carbon-neutral future. There are no other areas of concern based on a DPD comment letter." That ends our presentation of the 189 Walker Street parcel.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the summary of your project. We're going to open up the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearings closed. We're going to open up questions and comments from the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'll question both projects instead of going back-to-back, because they're kind of interconnected here, right? So I'm not quite schooled in geothermal energy, but currently, you'd have to, the borefield isn't dug. You'd have to, that's part of the whole project, right? So how long would that take to get that in place? I'm just thinking parking over there, just my own education on this.
Thank you for the question. The borefield itself is, you know, a two-to-three-month effort to drill that. There's 36 bores. You know, there's estimates where you can get, you know, one a day once things get going. You know, I would say that's probably a little-
Is the plan to do this over the summer?
The schedule hasn't been finalized yet. We're working with the DPU and also with the contractors right now, or I should say National Grid is.
Sure.
So the plan is to, I think, still have things done later this year at some point.
Yeah, we're still working through a procurement period with contractors and also just some-
Another question I have is, we have green properties here that are going to be connected. Are they, I can see they're not all university buildings, so how was, how were properties selected? Were they opting in, or was there some kind of rhyme or reason? Because it just kind of looks like the patchwork throughout that block.
There was a canvassing effort that went through, and National Grid worked with the customers in the area. I would say the reason why this was targeted was UMass was a proponent of this and was really looking to get involved with this project, so it was built around them. But then there was a canvassing effort that went out to customers that were interested in participating.
No, ideally, is it to get the whole block involved? I mean, is that kind of, obviously not this. You're going to try to get this done first, but I mean, long-term, is that really the, you know, your neighbor sees that it's working, now they want to get involved, there's a capacity to do that, add more houses to the grid, I guess, for lack of a better term?
No, that's definitely a good question. I mean, obviously, the future is, you know, would be looking to expand. Right now, the borefield is designed for the customers that are identified in the highlights on the figure. You'll also see a shading in the borefield in the parking lot where there's some shaded bores. Those are possibly additional ones that could be added if additional customers, if that worked out in the future.
So this borefield that's built in the parking lot, with the properties currently selected, you wouldn't have, would you have to expand that to add more properties on it? Or does that have the capacity to add more properties with what you're putting in right now?
The borefield has presented right now with 36 bores. That is set up and designed to cover the highlighted buildings, just the highlighted buildings right now. However, there is opportunity, you know, there is additional bores shown there that could be expanded to increase this if that becomes available.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, the variance we're asking for is really for two small shed-like properties. I think the positives outweigh any negatives. There was a question about handicap parking in the apartment complex, but I think that was addressed too. So other than that, I have no questions on this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say how excited I am about this project. This is amazing, absolutely amazing. I wish I lived in this area. Boy, oh, boy. What a game changer. And to see that you have the Mammoth Fire building on it as well. Do you see this geothermal providing all of the heating and cooling required for such a big building? Is that Mammoth, as well as the housing?
For the housing authority, yes. That's the intent, is to basically have this provide all the heating and cooling for it. Mammoth, we are basically switching out three-quarters of the building rooftop tenants. So there are a few tenants of that building that are not going to be on right now.
Okay.
But yeah, the idea is what we switch out will be completely heated and cooled by this new system.
This is phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. I want to see this throughout the city. Of course, I just have to ask, tomorrow, there's a big announcement going on in the mayor's reception room for the Link project. Are there any discussions to do borings and geothermal over there for those new buildings that are going to be built?
I haven't been involved with anything like this.
Sorry, which, which project?
Okay, so there's silos over here, I guess, in UMass Lowell still, okay. So we have $800 million announcement tomorrow about a bunch of buildings being done. It's housing as well as commercial buildings in a 10-acre campus setting over between the Songus and the Lasha Park. So there's a lot of room over there, new buildings, but they all should be electric. They all should be geothermal, in my opinion, since you guys are doing it here.
Yeah, that sounds like a great opportunity, but we weren't, we weren't ready to that.
Well, I just want to plant the seed. Please get involved. And then I just want to ask noise. So what kind of noise is being generated in these buildings, and is it something that's being mitigated?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. We saw that. So the noise for the equipment inside the building, if you were, if you were sitting here, if the equipment was running right here and you were standing next to it three feet away, the decibels are 55 decibels. That's inside the building. That's before it goes through the building walls, before it goes through the insulation. So it should be mitigated. By the time you get outside at the property line, it should be washed away by the surrounding, you know, just general ambient.
Okay, terrific. I am just wishing I had a property in this test site. But you're, it's wonderful to see, absolutely wonderful to see. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I share the same sentiments. I think this is going to be a great project. I'm very excited for it. Fantastic presentation, and I think it will be a benefit to the city. And considering the criteria for the special permit and for the variance, I know Peter, thank you for providing this memorandum. It pretty much hits it spot-on on all the aspects that are, the criteria that are needed for, you know, the project's going to meet sustainable Lowell 2025's goal, or producing energy from renewable sources. Transfer station, you know, it's small, tiny, and it's not going to affect the neighborhood all that much, and it's in the back of the building. So, and every single other aspect of the criteria seems to be met. So I would be in full support of this for both the special permit and the variance, and I wish him the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I find this geothermal heating and cooling fascinating. I actually was lucky enough to work on a project at one time doing the controls, so I did all the installing and the programming of them. So I did work on a project like this. I found it fascinating. I still do, so I'm totally being in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I can add anything else that's already been said about this magnificent project. I think it's a move in the right direction, and the fact that you are setting a precedent here, so hopefully that this is something that would move forward as we find new ways, you know, for sustenance, sustenance. No other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Sir, like my colleague said, very detailed plans and summary and narrative. I know it's appreciated. I appreciate it. I know my colleagues do as well. You know, I'll keep it brief. I think this is kind of the wave of the future, and thank you for bringing it to Lowell and, you know, with this project, and hopefully we just can expand on this kind of futuristic wave of kind of technology. So I think this is a great, great project for the city, so thank you to National Grid for this. Anyway, we can support it. I can support it. I think we will, so appreciate it. Do we have any conditions? I don't think so. So we're just, just procedure-wise, we're just to vote for each one? All right, can we motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-9 for special permit and variance at 189 Walker Street with no conditions.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second, Mr. Prokop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
Approve.
All right. 189 has been approved, so we'll go to motion for 813 Broadway.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-10 for special permanent variance at 813 Broadway Street.
Mr. Chair, can I just make a point of order?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure you opened the second case.
I was about to say the same thing. When I mentioned one for each, I was talking about the special permit, one for the special permit and one for the variance, and then, thank you for pointing that out. I was going to, yeah, we hadn't even opened up for 813 Broadway yet, so I guess the vote was just for Walker Street for them, even though we did it together, but it's not a big deal. Sorry for the confusion, but yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you for that, appreciate it, sir. All right. So I'll read ZBA-2024-10. That's a petition, a special permit variance, also by National Grid, property located 813 Broadway Street. National Grid has applied to zoning board appeal seeking variance and special permit approval to construct a geothermal pump house at 813 Broadway Street. The property is located in the institutional zoning district. The project requires special permit under Section 12.7A for any public service utility use, a variance under Section 5.1 for maximum front yard setback, and any relief required on load zoning ordinance. So we're voting up this petition to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none. That portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition, seeing none. The public hearings closed. So we'll close the hearing, now we'll have a motion to vote on the matter. Oh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I just want to be clear, if I could ask, three, Mr. Chairman, again, noise generated from the pump house, is that the same answer, that we're 55 decibels inside and it's mitigated with the shell of the building?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, did you have anything else to say further, sir? I know at the last time you said this ends, you had said that this ends our presentation for Walker Street, and now we're on Broadway, so if you had anything further to say, I think...
I was just going to speak specifically about the variance and special permit required for this. There's a slight difference on this parcel. The special permit is the same, it's the use, the industrial use in this zone, which is a different zone. This is industrial, institutional zone. The variance is for, on this parcel, not for open space, but for the setback. In that particular zone, as you know, there's an eight-foot maximum setback, and this building is actually set back 70 feet to line up with the borefield. So that, the variance is actually for pushing the building back, partially to line up with the borefield and partially because we didn't want to put the building right next to that house, which is adjacent to it. So that's the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any comments by my colleagues for 813 Broadway Street?
I'm going to miss that parking lot. I'd park there all the time when I was going to UMass Lowell.
Thank you for that, Mr. Callahan. Any other comments?
The parking lot won't be affected except for where that building is.
Oh, you mentioned a house, you're like moving a building, you mentioned a building.
Yeah.
So, my bad.
Any other comments by my colleagues for this petition? Seeing none, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-10 for special permanent variance at 813 Broadway Street with no conditions.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McCarthy. Second, Mr. Proko. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Proko.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, gentlemen, you've been approved.
Thank you. Thank you, board, for your time, and thank you, Peter, for all your assistance with the application.
Thank you again for coming out tonight. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda, we have other business. We have minutes for approval for March 11th, 2024. Is there any updates, edits, revisions, comments for the minutes for March 11th? Seeing none, can we motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 11th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes. Second, by Mr. Proko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All ayes, ayes have it. Any other comments before we move forward to adjourn?
Happy Greek Independence Day to all my Greek friends out there.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Agreed.
Not Greek, but I might as well be.
Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, can we motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. McCarthy, second one by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Ayes are unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, have a good night, folks.
Thank you.